Okay.
Pretty nice sweater you got there, Rich.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Good choice on the holiday sweater, Rich.
You always say it's so dark. You always say I'm in that big dark room, so I figured I'd, well, now I'm going. So I figured I would lighten it up a little bit. I was gonna sit in front of the Christmas tree, but that's on the other side of the room. I don't feel like going through that effort, but.
Very bright and cheerful.
It's always light out where Jay is. I don't know how he does that.
Yeah, really? Isn't that amazing?
I can never get the backgrounds to work. I guess I have too much space behind me. Jay, are we good to go?
We are good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular session of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is December 22nd, 2020. The time is 7:00 PM. First order of business is roll call. Pamela, can you?
Absolutely.
Take care of that.
Mac?
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Sorry, here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Steve Demossi.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Yeah.
Pam Rubenoff here. And for the staff, Jamie Rabbit.
Present.
Jay Parker.
Here.
Brian Wagner.
Here.
Rich Bourbonay.
For.
And Andy Tights, special counsel.
Yes. And by the way, reminding you that Mark Haddon will be your legal counsel for the second matter for the Compassion Center matter. I'll be, I'll be letting him know and he'll be joining us as we get close to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All present. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minute meetings for November 10th work session, November 12th special session, and November 24th special session.
I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which includes the referenced minutes as well as the report of the administrative officer.
We have a motion from Maria. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Second from Susan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. And next item on the agenda is the pre-application for a minor subdivision with a costly minor subdivision.
One moment, Mr. Chairman. I believe they're coming in.
And this is a pre-application.
One second. Priscilla Hashim, Hashambo. Are you on the line, on the call?
Yes.
Tom Bradley.
I hear.
Okay. So you guys, you guys made it?
Yes.
Okay, your agenda item is up.
Okay, we have the floor. If you'd like to make your presentation on what you'd like to do on this property?
Sure. So what we're proposing is a, it's currently, it's a just over a four, four acre lot and basically looking to split it into two parcels using the flexible frontage design. It's a just kind of open woodland gently sloping, no wetlands. No no, no major issues with it. There is a question at the, at the access there that little 40 foot strip coming down, there is a straight state drainage culvert. So, you know, we'll probably have to coordinate with the state when they do the physical alteration permit and stuff like that for the entrance, but that's proposed for whoever, you know, develops a lot in the, in the future.
Can you just state your name?
Oh, sure. It's Tom Bradley. I'm the, I work for Pinchland Surveying, the project manager.
Okay. And your proposal is to split this into two lots?
Correct.
And how about your?
Um, we're proposing to, through that 40 foot strip at the top there where the fringes is a proposed drive to come into there. We'll try and see if possibly we can work something out where it'll be a shared drive. So we can access the problem, you know, one of the problems with that is with the 50 foot vegetative buffer where I drive to come in behind that, you know, you'd be, it doesn't really work. At this point, I mean, it's something obviously we'll, we'll look at in the future. It is an option we're keeping open, but as of right now, the driveway was proposed to come through that 40 foot strip. I believe the owner is trying to make contact with one of the budding owners to see if they can access one of the access one of the 30 foot right of ways.
Typically, we'd like to see limited access. You know, it is a scenic highway.
Sorry about that.
It, it is a scenic highway, so we, the board would probably recommend a shared access off ministerial road. Are those, that right of way at the bottom of the page, is that a, is that in use right now, that 30 foot right of way?
That is used for, there's a lot down to the south, southwest that, that use, that uses that for access. So it doesn't, our, our property doesn't have any, any rights to that as of now.
Okay.
But according to the map, it says it's paved, correct?
Or, yeah, it's partly paved.
Partly paved.
Yeah, about halfway down and it's gravel.
Right. If you don't have anything further, I'll take questions from the board members.
Steve, just one thing that I'd mention is I believe that because it's using a flexible frontage vision, that it's actually category as a major subdivision and not a minor subdivision as shown on our agenda.
Yeah, actually, you're right. On the agenda, it says minor, and I think on the paperwork, it says. So you're correct.
And I would also just ask that the applicant be sure that they are all familiar with the relevant sections of the zoning ordinance related to the scenic highway.
This is Susan. Could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. There are a number of properties to the west of this property that all seem to be accessed from a different roadway, which is further up ministerial road. There's gonna be all sorts of roads behind this property. Have you investigated accessing this property from that shared driveway in the back?
Yeah, that's that 30 foot right of way that runs along the, the west edge of the property. I believe the owners, I, I have not investigated that. I believe the, the owners were going, were gonna look into that, you know, speak to the, the owners of that property and see if there was something that could be done.
Okay, because there's a road that comes in off of 110 that it looks like there's at least three or four different houses that use that one roadway?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, again, we are, our property doesn't have any, any rights to that right of way as of now.
That's something that the owner is, is trying to maybe potentially work out?
Yes, yeah, obviously that would be a better option and make everything work a lot easier, but I'm not sure exactly how they're, how they're progressing on that as of right now.
Okay, thank you.
That would certainly make a lot of sense if it was viable.
And again, realize that this is a scenic highway, so as this project moves along, be cognizant of any disturbance of the vegetation along ministerial road, because if you take any of that out, you, you will have to replace it. So just, just be aware of that.
Steve, I'd also just want to echo your earlier comments. I personally like to see if possible a shared driveway as well. The existing property looks like it has two driveways, so that would be three driveways in a relatively short distance. I think if we could somehow get a shared driveway and was, lower that to one, that would be, it would be an improvement.
Yeah, I think that would be the way to go.
This is Pam, and I'm just, I, I see that the existing house there has not much of a buffer in front of it in terms of a vegetated, a natural vegetated buffer, and it also has the garage facing forward, which like this likely was pre-existing before the scenic highway. So I'm just wondering if there's any potential to potentially vegetate the, you know, that island with instead of putting lilies there, some of the natural vegetation that we often will encourage landowners to, to put there. So that's just a consideration.
You're not correct. That house has been there for many, many years, so almost predates the road.
Yeah, I'm sure if we can make a shared driveway work, I'm sure we can definitely, you know, re-vegetate the existing, you know, make it just, you know, there'd be a better option if we can't use those existing right of ways and have to come in with a new one is actually you know, re-vegetate those if like, so if we can make that driveway on the side, side work.
Okay. Um, Jay, because this is if they split this lot, would, would they be required despite the existing home to, to put a landscape in that along ministerial road?
I, I don't believe so. I think Andy might be able to answer that more appropriately, but they're not ma, well, I guess it's up to the purview of the board.
I didn't, I didn't know because it's a major, considered a major subdivision, whether that would come into play.
Possibly. You have any thoughts on that? Um, what was that I heard?
I was, because it's a major subdivision, because would that require them to put the vegetation in? The buffer, no?
No, the fact that it's a major wouldn't change it. I think the, the feeling is if it's, it's really at the discretion of the board. It's pre-existing now. Um, I think if, you know, if the house were in back and the new lot were in the front, then I'd say absolutely they must put it in. At this point, it's up to you, I think, as your discretion as to how much or if anything they, they need to put in, because they're really not changing that. But I think you've already pointed out about the driveway and perhaps if they're, you know, making sure to come in off the same driveway, that would help too, coming off one of their driveways where they've got a circular drive. Looks like they've got room there to the, well, assuming we're facing north to south, the south driveway there, they could come in and come along the south edge. But I think that's, these are obviously the suggestions that you're giving them for, for the future. And the one thing about the major, I'll just remind you, you need to decide the, tonight, normally you don't make a decision, but you do need to decide you have a request to combine master plan and preliminary.
Yes, I, I certainly agree with everybody about the, the combined share, shared driveway and in the event that that isn't possible, I think it would be prudent to try to re-vegetate that area as Pam suggested. Certainly natives, roadies and mountain laurel are ubiquitous along that roadway and would be fairly easily established if it were necessary.
Okay. Any comments from staff?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we would tend to agree with the comments of the board members this evening with regards to combining those driveways that did come up with staff as well as members of the TRC. And we have no issues with combining the master and preliminary.
Okay. If there's no other comments from board members and the applicants heard what we've had to say tonight in particular to the driveway access. When you do come back, we'd probably like to have a definitive answer on whether you've contacted the butters and whether you have a, a chance to use one of their right of ways. So if you can get that answered before you come back to us, just so we don't have that question hanging, it would be helpful, Mr. Brady, Bradley, excuse me.
Yep, I understand completely. We'll, we'll work on that and as I said, we'll try and address those, address those concerns as best we can.
Um, I would be, I'd be happy to make the motion to combine the stages of review if the board doesn't have any other questions.
We have a motion from Maria. Do we have a second? I have a second from Pam. I see her hand raised as she's looking for the mute button. Any discussion?
Button.
There's no discussion, Pam. You want to take a roll call?
Yes, and I'll unmute myself. Let's go for Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
Steve Demossi.
Aye.
Peter Di Stefano.
Aye.
Joe Murphy.
Aye.
Paul Jordan.
Aye.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
Pam Rubenoff, aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, Mr. Bradley and Priscilla. We'll see you when you come back to us. Okay. There's no further questions from the applicant. Next item on our agenda is development plan review, advisory to zoning for the Winding Road Compassion Center. I'm gonna bring them in, Jay.
One second. Mark, Mark Haddon will also be joining us as special counsel.
Okay.
Good evening.
All right, just please identify yourself.
Mark Haddon, special counsel for the board.
Okay.
Hearing only for tonight.
Okay, we ready to hear the application? Who's representing the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christine Angustian. I am an attorney with the law office at One Grove Avenue in East Providence, Rhode Island. Tonight, I represent the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc., which is the applicant presently before this board. The subject property is located at 682 Kingstown Road and is bounded to the east by Route 108, to the west by Holly Street, and to the south by Dale Collier Street. The applicant proposes a medical marijuana compassion center of approximately 5,000 square feet at the southern end of the building on the premises. The proposed use is permitted by a special use permit under the South Kingstown zoning ordinance. The applicant submitted a project review application and a zoning board of review application to the town. The applicant, through its project team members and authorized representatives, appeared before the town's technical review committee on October 14th and November 12th of this year. The TRC voted unanimously to send a project application to this planning board. And so doing, the TRC committee made certain recommendations and the project engineers, with the assistance of the registered landscape architect, revised the plans and resubmitted those plans shortly after the conclusion of the November 12th TRC meeting. And those are the plans that are presently before this planning board. The applicant is here before you tonight on the development plan and for an advisory recommendation to the town zoning board of review on the applicant's application for the special use permit. Tonight, what we'd like to do is present a PowerPoint through the engineers and then have testimony from two witnesses. Patrick J. Casey, who's president of the applicant, and Paul Bannon, who is a traffic expert and a project team member for this development proposal. What I'd like to do is take the time now just to introduce briefly the project team. And with the chair's permission, we can then go into the PowerPoint. So we have tonight, as I stated, Patrick J. Casey III, President of the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc. Joseph Casali and Daniel De Cesaris, registered professional engineers at Joe Casali Engineering, Inc. Paul Bannon, traffic expert at Beta Group, Inc., who submitted to the town a traffic impact assessment dated October 6th, 2020. Diane Soul, a registered landscape architect at Diane C. Soul and Associates. Dennis Caldwell from Dennis Caldwell Architects. And Edward Pimental, AICP, the project's land use consultant and an expert in the area of planning and zoning. Mr. Pimental also submitted a written comprehensive land use planning report to the town, and that should also be before you as well. We also have persons that are affiliated with the applicant that are experts in the field of security and they're present to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. So with, with the chair's permission, I'd like to have the Joseph Casali of Joe Casali Engineering, Inc. to present the PowerPoint. to present the PowerPoint.
Excuse me, Christine?
Yes.
Um, I don't see Ed Pimental in the attendees list or Dennis. Were they going to attend this evening?
Yes, uh, Ed Pimental's here at the, he's having some technical difficulty. So he's here with um, me in the conference room. So if he needs to, to answer questions, he's available.
Okay.
And Dennis, I thought would be calling in, so I'm not certain whether.
There's one call in, in the attendees list. If that's our missing witness, he should raise his hand.
That's a Connecticut number, eight six zero?
No, that's, I don't believe that's his number.
Okay.
So I apologize. I, I anticipated his presence, but it could very well be he's unable to attend. I apologize.
Hey, would you mind allowing me to share my screen so I can bring up the PowerPoint, please?
Do you promise not to zoom bomb us?
I, yes, I do.
Uh, go ahead. Do you have? Do you see the button to share?
Yeah. Um, no, you, I think you have to stop sharing. Um, it says you can't. Yeah, thank you. So uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, first of all, good evening. And just for the record, my name is Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer. I have offices here at three hundred Post Road in Warwick. Uh, if I may, uh, just go through a quick PowerPoint to help uh, explain the project uh, before Paul Bannon, our traffic engineer. Uh, who's going to expand on uh, on some of the traffic issues as well. So when we look, uh, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the proximity to the town, um, Kingstown Road, Old Tower Hill, Holly Street, uh, Dale Collier, and ultimately, this is the lot in question. Um, assesses plot fifty-seven dash one lot ninety-six. Uh, it's a two-point-seven acre piece. It's entirely in your commercial highway zone. Um, when we look closer at the piece, uh, it, it's really a three-unit condominium. Uh, Ocean State Job Lot has what um, what we consider unit number three. Uh, there's a couple of different uses, including uh, in a client shop, subway and a Thai restaurant in unit two. And this is the subject uh, unit to make the renovations, um, unit one, which was uh, previously known as uh, Yankee Travel. Um, and that's the smallest unit. Um, it's about point-three-seven acres. Uh, and when we look at uh, what we are planning to do in terms of a compassion center, um, on the right is the main floor, which will be taking most, but not all of it. Um, and then uh, on the left is the, is the basement plan. So, you know, the purpose is to have a, a secure entry and exit to the facility where the um, security and IDs can be checked. And then also just have a small area where clients can matriculate um, through the retail section. So from the other uses and our other facilities, we anticipate anywhere from twenty to twenty-five patients per hour. During our max day peak hour, we can expect upwards to forty. Um, you know, based on data, we, we anticipate that people spend about ten minutes in the stores. But to that amount of people, we need anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four employees during our peak hour. Um, we also have a restroom uh, that will be open to the public. Um, and then we get into the security features in terms of our secure hallway and delivery to bring anything in terms of packaging and fulfillment in those purple areas. Um, you know, as outlined in our narrative, this isn't a growth center. Um, this is entirely just pre-packaged materials that will be taken out of um, larger boxes and then pre-packaged materials um, put on the shelves uh, in terms of retail use. Um, we have a couple of secure vaults, one for product, one for money in cash. Um, there's different offices in terms of management on the, um, you know, on the retail floor, but also security uh, in different management offices in the basement. Um, we do have staff break rooms, um, as well as employee restrooms so that they're not co-mingling in terms of security. Um, we want to, in terms of the elevation of the building, uh, you know, we are going to do a little bit of a, of a facelift on it. Um, there is an area in the rear here in terms of uh, there is an existing window. And so we're going to need to, you know, that needs to be opaque in terms of our operations. There's no drive-through or pickup here. Uh, but that would not work well in terms of our security and operations. So we're going to do that in a way that um, we want to match what's existing there. Uh, but we also leave it to the towns. If, if there's some type of, of, of window dressing or fake window that we can put there um, so that this doesn't look like a back of building facing those residents, um, we'd be uh, open to suggestions for that. Um, in terms of the rework of the um, of the parking lot, um, I think we've done a couple of iterations with staff. Um, and you know, it's come out really well. We've actually gained uh, parking spaces through the closure of, of one of the entrance and exits. Um, so I'm going to let Paul Bannon, um, when I finish, get into most of the traffic. But in essence, um, part of our proposal is going to be some pavement markings within the state highway. Um, one of the big areas is we'll be closing or petitioning the DOT to close one of the ingress and egresses and having most, if not all of the traffic either come in through now this formalized ingress egress, but also a restructured and, and reworked on um, on the local Dale Collier. You know, in terms of parking, um, we have enough parking uh, in terms of your zoning code, uh, which for all of the uses put together requires a hundred and forty-six spaces. Um, we were able, um, thanks to some of the comments from staff, we were able to re-stripe this lot and garnish even more spaces. Um, while we had sixteen more than code required, um, we were able to add another, another three spaces. But most importantly, um, the site was out of, out of, um, you know, comportment with the ADA regulations. So it now, at least for the hundred and sixty-five spaces, will have the correct ADA spaces and the, and the striping. Um, so we've also looked at different um, areas where we've put in uh, crosswalks. Um, we've, we've put in a new sidewalk along Dale Collier. I think that was one of the asks during the DPR. Um, we've been asked to modify this area, um, so that we could have a landscaped piece here. Maybe we can turn this forty-five degree angular parking into parallel spaces and then also have crosswalks and a walkway um, right into the facility. Um, we have a loading space in the rear part of the secured delivery. Um, and then in terms of utilities, it's, it's pretty benign being just a retail store. Um, we have an existing sewer service. Um, while this isn't a sewer permit, we just asked to make sure that there was um, sewer availability. Same with water. Um, this is just domestic service, um, and fire protection into the entire structure, which will remain. Again, not a, what a service permit from sewer is just a letter of water availability. We're lucky enough, Mr. Chairman, we have a hydrant right outside the facility. Um, we just wanted to uh, get in touch with Union Fire in terms of our use. Um, we still would have to go back through uh, the fire marshal through subsequent processes. Um, existing gas to remain. And then in terms of lighting, uh, the wall packs and the pole-mounted lights in the plaza will remain. Um, that should provide us more than enough in terms of what we need for security. Um, we have put in some drainage in terms of capturing the first flush of water um, that before it hits the state highway. Um, we were lucky enough with some of the soils that we had in the area. Um, I know that staff is just seeing this for the first time, but um, we were able to not only treat the water quality of, you know, we're a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty percent of the water quality volume. So at least that first flush of stormwater, that most dangerous, the dirtiest portion of it um, gets routed through bio-retention areas, um, gets cleaned. So um, we can expect a reduction in volume and attenuation of peaks. Um, but most importantly, I think what you're getting out of this is an increase in water quality. And um, in terms of landscaping, uh, Diane Soul is on the call. Um, I know that um, staff hadn't done a full evaluation on this because of the lack of um, specifics in terms of species. Um, we understand that. Um, we tried to put our best foot forward, so to speak, in terms of maximum extent of practicability to meet everything we could in the landscaping. And um, if we ought to take another step, um, you'll see a much more flushed-out landscaping specs um, in terms of details and plant materials. Um, we were able to meet a lot, if not most, of the regulations in terms of street trees and our spacing um, in terms of caliper and shrubs. Um, there were areas um, that we didn't want to sacrifice frankly for the parking, um, which uh, which is part of the pre-existing non-conformance of the lot in terms of interior landscaping um, and the landscaping around the strip of, of the building. So to wrap this up, as um, Christine said, in terms of our path, uh, Mr. Chairman, we were before the TRC for an advisory review initially in October, um, back in November. And now we're here before you tonight, um, for our development plan review and advisory to zoning. Um, we are scheduled to appear before your zoning board after the new year in January. Um, and then the process really starts at that point in terms of getting building permits and sewers water and uh, the South Kingston Sewer Department. Um, as you know, we have to get picked by the Department of Business Regulation for the license. Um, and um, and then back before ultimately the building official for, for a building permit. Um, I'm not sure if, if you have questions or, or if members of the board have questions or if you want to let Mr. Bannon. Sure, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure the board has uh, some comments on the uh, the landscaping and the parking. But if you'd like to do Mr. Bannon first, uh, with the land, with the uh, traffic study, um, I'm fine with that.
All right.
And then we'll come back to uh, the landscaping and the parking.
What I'd like to do is just have the um, applicant representative explain the operation and then I'll have Mr. Bannon testify. If that's permissible, Mrs. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Just, just as a, a note of order, if I may, I, I don't know if it's this board's procedure and practice to have all your witnesses sworn before they testify.
Usually just have them state their name and uh, and their professional credentials.
Great.
Yes, we're, we're not a judiciary board, so we leave that up to the zoning board of review to do the swearing in.
That's fine. Thank you.
Patrick Casey on?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Casey, what is your relationship to the applicant, the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc.?
I'm uh, president.
Have you reviewed both the project review application and the zoning application for a special use permit?
Yes, I have.
Did you sign both applications in your capacity as president?
Yes, I did.
Could you please describe the proposed use?
Uh, the use is a retail medical marijuana compassion center.
Have you reviewed the site plan and the floor plan that was submitted with those applications?
Yes, I have.
How would a customer enter the compassion center and be screened? So the company can ascertain whether that customer had the requisite permission to purchase the cannabis products?
Uh, the customer would enter the front entrance vestibule where he or she would present a valid photo ID card and a valid medical marijuana patient card to a security person.
Would anyone without such an identification card be allowed to come in and accompany the medical marijuana cardholder?
No, they would not.
How would the building's interior space that is designed for customers be set up and utilized by those customers?
Uh, after presenting his or her valid ID and medical marijuana card, the customer would go directly in line to one of the fourteen point-of-sale stations. And then immediately after completing the sale, the customers will immediately exit the facility.
In support of their development and zoning applications, the applicant submitted a document entitled Security Protocols. Would you explain in summary fashion the security system for the interior of the building?
Uh, sure. The security system will be designed in conjunction with the town's police chief and will include key card, FOB access, uh, video cameras with recording covering all of the retail area along, along with the delivery area, secure storage vault, order fulfillment room and all other areas as mandated by the Rhode Island Department of Business Regulation. Uh, it'll be accompanied by a state-of-the-art alarm system linked directly to the DPR with the twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven video feeds also available to the town of South Kingston's police force. There will be at least two full-time security people inside the building at all time. And there will also be a security supervisor in the security room monitoring all interior and exterior video feeds in real time.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. You mentioned earlier that a security person will be stationed at the entrance of the facility, checking the patient ID cards. Where within the interior of the dispensary will the second security guard or person be situated?
Uh, that uh, person would be on the sales floor monitoring the customers.
Will any loitering be allowed?
No.
Would you also explain the plant's security for the exterior of the building?
Uh, the exterior of the building and parking area will also be well-lit and covered by security cameras with recording. And it will be monitored in real time by the security supervisor in the security room.
Can you explain how the cannabis products will be brought to and unloaded at the site?
Uh, the products will be delivered by a small transit van unmarked from the cultivator or manufacturer to the secure delivery hallway at the rear of the building at unspecified irregular times. Once the exterior doors close, the product's going to be taken downstairs and placed in the secure product vault. On a daily basis as needed, product will be taken from the secure product vault to the packaging room and ultimately upstairs to the fulfillment room for delivery to the point-of-sale stations. All products will be placed back into the secure product vault every night after closing.
How will cash from the daily sales be stored in the building and how will it be removed from the building?
Um, the cash will be periodically picked up from the point-of-sale stations and be taken to the money vault room in the basement and placed in a safe. Each day, again, at an unspecified and irregular time, a bonded and licensed cash pickup company with experience in the cannabis industry will pick up the cash and deliver it to the bank.
Are the security protocols that you just identified typical ones that you would want to see implemented at any compassion center, no matter where it was located?
Yes.
How did you determine the type of security system and protocols to have in place at the proposed compassion center?
Uh, we engaged the security consultant to design the systems and protocols. Uh, that consultant is Steve Ford, previously designed and ran the security operations at Slater Compassion Center in Providence during the first five years of its operation. Prior to that, Mr. Ford was a Warwick policeman and detective and served five years with the Drug Enforcement Agency. Mr. Ford is also attending this meeting and is available to answer any further security questions.
Could you just confirm for the board, the, I, I know um, Mr. Casali mentioned this in the PowerPoint, but just for purposes of, of confirmation, approximately how many employees do you anticipate having at this facility?
Uh, again, eighteen to twenty-four.
And what are the proposed hours of operation?
Uh, eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week.
On average, how many patients or customers do you expect to arrive on an hourly basis?
Uh, on average, we're, we're, we're planning uh, to receive approximately twenty to twenty-five customers an hour. And uh, each customer generally will remain on the premises for about ten minutes.
Will any marijuana be cultivated, grown or manufactured on the subject premises?
Uh, no, it will not.
All products per se will be pre-packaged before delivery to the subject building. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, the products are packaged for individual sale, pre-weighed and pre-labeled and then placed in larger containers for transport to the compassion center from the, the grower or, or manufacturer. Um, the individual sales units are then taken out of a larger container in the packaging room in the basement outside the product vault and prepared for delivery to the fulfillment room upstairs.
The medical marijuana retail store. Will the medical marijuana retail store emit any orders that would be detectable from the outside of the building?
No, it will not.
Will the compassion center emit noises detectable from the outside of the building?
No, it will not.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions that I have from Mr. Casey. And the next witness and last witness would be Paul Bannon.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bannon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
State your name, please.
My name is Paul Bannon. I'm an associate with Beta Group in Lincoln, Rhode Island.
Mr. Bannon, are you presently employed?
I'm employed at Beta Group in Lincoln, Rhode Island.
What is your present position at Beta Group, Inc.?
I'm an associate in charge of the traffic engineering section.
What are your responsibilities as an associate?
I'm in charge of completing, obtaining and completing traffic studies for private development projects such as this and working on department transportation projects, roadway improvements, arterial projects, and roadway projects for municipalities.
Do your responsibilities include assessing for a client potential traffic impact associated with the proposed development or use of land?
Yes, we will.
Generally, could you provide to the board your background and experience in the field of engineering?
I've been working over 36 years and as a traffic engineer in State of Rhode Island, working on projects focusing in the transportation and traffic engineering component of civil, working on department transportation roadway projects, arterial signal system projects, and working as a consultant for the State Traffic Commission, doing safety and operational studies for over six-year period and working on development projects from small to large scale throughout the state.
And different type of uses, correct? Industrial, manufacturing, waterfront, et cetera?
Yes, many, many different types of uses.
Have you ever been qualified as an expert in traffic engineering?
Yes, I've testified in over 40 communities in Rhode Island and Massachusetts and in Superior Court in Rhode Island and Massachusetts as a traffic expert.
Specifically, have you been qualified as a traffic expert before this planning board?
On many occasions.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that the board accept Paul Bannon as a traffic engineering expert for purposes of tonight's hearing.
Okay.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bannon, was the firm of Beta Group, Inc. hired to conduct a traffic impact study for the proposed compassion center at 682 Kingston Road? That is the subject of tonight's hearing.
Yes, we were.
Were you the person who in fact conducted that study?
Yes, along with my engineering staff.
Before starting the study, what did you do to familiarize yourself with the proposed development plan?
We coordinated with the project team, had several meetings to review the proposal, review the site conditions and the goals of the project.
Could you tell the board what are the servicing roadways to the proposed use that were examined?
As Joe had described, we're in a plaza formerly the Bennys Plaza on the west of Lee side of Route 108 with Dale Collier Street to the south and Holly Street to the immediate west. Joe had indicated there are several businesses within the plaza today in the existing building, but we looked at those immediate servicing roadways within the downtown area.
Did the traffic study also examine and analyze the nearest intersections to the site?
Yes, anticipating that much of the traffic will be associated to the south and along Route 108. We reviewed the Dale Collier intersection, the Indian Run signalized intersection, which influences that section of road.
Please explain to the board the methodology that was used in the traffic study conducted for the proposed project.
Typically, we first review the project itself, what is proposed, and work with the site engineer to ensure that safe and adequate access is provided at the proposed driveways and what we're thinking about driveways. We inventory the physical conditions of the roadways, horizontal, vertical geometry, site distances, budding land uses, traffic regulations. And then we obtain accident data, record information are collected ourselves. If it was not available, then for this location, we also obtained traffic accident data from the South Kingston Police Department to determine if there are any concerns relative to the frequency and severity of crashes in the downtown area. And then we estimated future traffic conditions for this type of land use and then we assess the future condition at the driveways and study intersections.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Did the traffic study take into account the hours of operation for the proposed use, particularly the opening and?
Yes. Yes, as Mr. Casey indicated, it'll be open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week.
Did the traffic study take into account the expected customer peak hours of operation for the proposed use?
Yes, these types of businesses typically are very slow during the morning period. You'll have a noon time peak. And then, but most of the customers typically arrive at the facility between 3:00 and closing. So, you know, most of the daily traffic is late afternoon, early evening for a site like this.
In your professional opinion, was the number of anticipated trips into the subject site for the proposed use that you set forth in your report realistic in light of the existing COVID pandemic?
Yes, we reviewed the Institute of Transportation engineers IT Trip Generation Manual for this land use, but the IT also has a recreational component to it, so it's more conservative. But we've done many studies and we've done independent studies at the three existing facilities in Rhode Island, the one in Portsmouth, Warwick, and Providence. So we've obtained data at those facilities, which are medical marijuana specific. So those three are accommodating the over 20,000 licensed medical users in the state. So once the additional six facilities are open, the customer base will be more distributed across the state more evenly to service the client base.
Did the traffic study take into account the proposed means of access to the site?
Yes, and that's where we worked with the technical review committee. We received some recommendations that we tried to implement as best as possible, including Logale Collier and 108 for access management reasons.
You attended the two technical review committee meetings on this project application. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Following these meetings, was the site parking layout as well as the number and configuration of access points to the site modified to accommodate comments that were raised by the technical review committee?
Yes, this is a very old plaza and nothing has really changed for decades. There are new policies and guidelines that we use today and we tried to implement them as best we could in this case, specifically reducing pedestrian conflicts, improving pedestrian flow to and through the site, providing better access management by eliminating conflicts and reducing the number of driveways along a commercial strip. We also, Mr. Shaw had recommended that we provide a median lane, turn lane for this northern driveway. So we'll be coordinating with the Department of Transportation to extend the existing dual-left turn lane that's to the immediate north, and that will provide for access to both sides of the road from a dedicated turn lane versus a high-speed internal lane that currently is used for turning in the downtown area.
Did the changes that were made to the site plan following the last TRC meeting affect the conclusions that you made in your traffic study in early October of this year?
No, they're consistent with what we had proposed.
What is the conclusion of the traffic study?
Based on the study that we completed, it was determined that the project would not have a detrimental impact on traffic safety or operations, while actually improve safety by eliminating some of the on-street parking and the configuration of the on-street parking, providing additional sidewalk and pedestrian ways and reducing turning conflicts at driveway openings. So we feel that safe and adequate access can be provided to this redeveloped parcel and that safe and adequate access is available to a local street.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Did you make any recommendations in your report for improvements of any kind?
We had made some recommendations relative to the parking and along Holly Street in eliminating parking and try to reconfigure the parking to improve sightlines at that driveway. We've recommended to put a stop sign at the intersection of Holly and Dale Collier that isn't there today.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my examination of Mr. Bannon and the applicant's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Any questions from board members of the Mr. Bannon on the traffic study?
I have a couple.
I do too, after Maria.
I'm third.
Let's start with Maria.
Okay, Mr. Bannon, looking at the traffic data, for example, the intersection turning movement count, it's a little bit unclear when these counts were actually done. I think your legal counsel referred to them as occurring in October of 2020. But what we have before us, I'm showing Dale Carlia 2012 and 2006. And the other compassion centers were done in May and August of 2020. So can you clarify this?
Yes, the most recent counts that we used were the 2012 counts. We can't count today. We couldn't count last year. So what we've been doing with general guidance from the Department of Transportation is to use the most recent information and then adjust it accordingly. If data is available, i.e. like if the Department of Transportation has a count statement that they counted in 2018 or 19, pre-COVID, and you have turning movement counts in an intersection, you can compare and see if they're similar and if any adjustments need to be made. This is consistent with current policy. We also have, I believe, the 2018 study from the Department of Transportation for the RSA along Old Tower Hill Road in Maine and downtown Wakefield as part of the recent roadway construction project. So that had information. I have done multiple studies in the downtown area, including the PCU and another compassion center. So we had data available.
But the actual counts were from 2012 and then were extrapolated. Is that correct?
Yes, specifically the installation for the Indian Run signal and that information was used because it's consistent.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam, I think you were next.
Great, thank you. Couple things. So first of all, I'm looking at the parking area and this seems to be a great improvement over what it is existing because it's a pretty bad situation there with all cars going in all directions and in and out places. So I have a couple of questions with regards to that. So the, I noticed that you have, off of 108, you have, first of all, the yellow pavement identified, the yellow marking on the entrance in and out.
Correct. Delineator of the driveway.
Right. Why wouldn't you do that then on the southern entrance there up against the cross from CBS?
That's something we could look at. This is, just because this is a higher-volume type driveway and defined as the main access to and from the site, we look at that as the side driveway is a minor driveway access to the property.
Yeah, I don't know if that's good practice or not. I leave that to you, but.
It usually depends on the volume and the width of the roads and if it needs to be. You know, for trucks entering the property, you know, you want people to stay in their lane so trucks can more easily turn. So with the wider radius on the main driveway, you want to try to keep them in that lane travel.
So you're really focusing on that area in front of those three condos for the focus of your parking improvements. How about to the north and then in back of the site? I'm not noticing that you're making any changes there. Is that correct?
No, that's a more standard parking field. What was concerning in front of the building was that everybody that wanted to leave the site pretty much had to go to the front and conflict with pedestrians. So what we've done is allowed cars to circulate along Route 108 and not have to go out in front of the buildings and conflict with pedestrians. So that was the major focus of improving the PED vehicle interaction in front of the complex.
I think your description about parking field, that was exactly what I was going to ask there. So do you feel that, you know, so I see that you're putting a stormwater, it seems, you know, some greenery there to the right of the major entrance. And so will that collect all of the stormwater coming from the rest of that parking field that you nicely called it?
That would have to be answered to Joe. I believe his office did a preliminary analysis. We worked with the engineering department and tried to introduce landscaping elements to the project and landscaping elements that would act as also a stormwater
Right.
mitigation where there is none today, where everything just goes off the site into the street. So we're doing the best we can with what's the current situation of the property.
Right.
But Joe may be able to give you some numbers if he's taking it that far.
Yes, so when we look at the site, you can see what Jay Park is sharing. The topography leads nicely that all that water passes through that. The topography leads nicely that all that water passes through that parking field. And we're going to try to capture it in the two drainage appearances that are up front. And so in terms of calculations, we'll be able to take more than the required water quality volume. So that that initial one inch of rain over the imperious areas. I think the calc's called for around 1300 or 1400 cubic feet of storage for the water quality volume and we're upwards of of 1800. So it it will, it will also attenuate, even though there is no increase in runoff, because. There's a decrease in imperious areas, it'll still reduce peak rates and it will reduce volumes. You know, when every little bit counts, it 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 may not be a great in terms of reduction. But every little bit counts, especially towards the state highways.
And thank you. How about to the to the north of that? So where the vertical, so you could see the. The parking field there on the other side of Job Lot. Where you see just all of the, you know, so in between Job Lot and the property line?
Correct, yeah, we we do not, we're not proposing any of the improvements. On that side, being a shared user with this lot, we've concentrated all of the improvements. In terms of of where our improvements are in terms of our our units. That's why you're not seeing anything in terms of drainage on that right-hand side for that that job.
Good. It would be wonderful if you could, but I I suppose that's, you know, that's something to be to be discussed. But, you know, I would imagine that there's a lot of, you know, especially, there's a lot of drainage coming off of that field as well. So just something to consider. I guess I want to ask another question about totally not, okay, probably, I don't know for which individual here, but. And I'll ask our staff as well. Remind me what the required required distance to residential properties is for compassion centers? Because the way I look at it, looks like we're around 300, 350 feet from. Either existing or proposed residences.
I don't believe, this is Jay Parker, I don't believe, I believe the distances to another cultivation or compassion center, not. Sorry, residential property.
In school, in school.
That's. The just 1000 feet from the pre-existing public or private school, a preschool or licensed daycare center. And 2000 from another compassion center.
Okay, I know that that has come out in some of the other proposals, so.
Yeah, nothing, there's nothing. That is in the ordinance relative to residences.
Okay, well, I'm thinking that. There might be some residents that that might have something to say about that, so maybe we'll just listen to them. But that that would be, you know, a question, you've talked about your security, et cetera. But there are some residences there, so I don't know if you have any other comments to to share about. Being within 300 feet of residences. What your experience is in some of the other places that you that you have compassion centers or where you're you've worked in.
Sorry, was that a question?
Well, I'm just putting it out there of, you know, any other precautions that you might want to consider, given that you're within 300 feet of residences. And some concern of of maybe we should hear from the residents, what they think, but.
We'll open it up to some of the attendees when we we finish with a number of comments, Pam.
Yeah, I'm finished, sir.
Susan, did you have a question for the traffic study, Mr. Bannon?
I did, thank you. Hi, Mr. Bannon, I I appreciate, I agree with what Pam had said about. Your your retention basement basins in the front, and I'm grateful to see that. I think that'll be an improvement on the parking lot. But I have a couple of questions about the traffic. Specifically on Dale Carlia Street and entering it or exiting it from Kingstown Road. It is nearly impossible to get into or out of that road during normal business hours. And especially exiting that road, you'll wait there until the kindness of another of a passerby on Kingstown Road stops to let you out. There's no traffic signal change that ever allows cars in or out of that road freely. And I wonder if this business is very, you know, if your business is 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 popular. If you'll need a traffic officer out there right in front of Dale Carlia Street to let cars in and out of that road? And how that will affect traffic at that main intersection? I think likewise, entering either of the Job Lot parking lot entrances is near impossible. When there's when there's active traffic on Kingstown Road. And. I guess I'd like to have that, I would like to understand whether or not having a. An officer out in front to manage traffic on the weekends is something that we'll need to see in this town and how that will affect that intersection and other traffic patterns in that area. So that's my first question.
We we anticipate but much of the traffic to be oriented to the south. Just because of population. densities in South Kingston, Narragansett and the immediate areas. So much of the traffic will be right turn exiting out of there, which is much less delayed than left turning traffic. We're proposing to extend the left turn lane. Going northbound, turning left into the property. So people will be able to get into a refuge lane and not block traffic on Kingstown Road. Is part of the TRC, we. Agreed to coordinate with the public safety officials. And once we're open, if there are any issues, that we would coordinate any. Control or mitigation, as you suggested, that that would be appropriate during a peak time. But again, we, you know, peak use of of this. Is usually late, late in the day, early evening, where we would have 40 customers or so during the day is is. Mr. Casey had indicated, it's typically 20 to 25 customers in an hour, so it's not a. A peaking congestion type business operation.
Thank you, but that leads me to my next question.
So.
So in your in your report, you indicated that you anticipate. Forty-five cars entering and 55 cars exiting during peak hours. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So. For me, since I've been on the planning board, this is our fourth project that we've seen in front of us. The first project that I saw, which was the engineering was done by Beta. The project was just around the corner from this project and you anticipated 95 cars entering and 95 cars exiting during a peak hour. The second project I saw was done by Beta and it was just across the street. And you anticipated 75 cars entering and 75 cars exiting per hour. And the third project was a different engineering company, was also directly across the street. And they anticipated five, 95 cars entering per hour and 95 cars exiting per hour. Do you anticipate that this compassion center will be less successful than the others, or has there been a mathematical error?
No, it's. It's. We've, since those other studies, we've done additional data collection. And have obtained, we we were more conservative in those initial studies because we only had, I think, one. Center and it was recreational. So we would conservative. In that light, but what we had done since those studies, we've done independent. Studies at each of the the existing three facilities in Rhode Island. And we know how many customers in that in a daily peak occur at those facilities. We then calculated a rate. Based on population densities and that's how we came up with. These numbers and. This assumes that all facility, all nine facilities are open. So there will be more distribution of 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 traffic and working with the owner. This owner and him. Providing information on his operations. We feel comfortable with the numbers that we projected here, that the other number is an I. Right, and I indicated in those other studies that they were very conservative.
But they also.
We we've collected substantial additional data at the existing facilities since those other reports. And this is more representative of what we would anticipate for one of the nine. Facilities based on the population densities in this area.
But this center will cover, what, six towns? The entire half, southern half of the state will be this one compassion. No? From Westerly to Northeast.
There's. There's. West Greenwich. Warwick. Westerly. There could be multiple centers. So, you know, we looked at the surrounding. Population in this zone and. I think we extended up to East Greenwich and and use that population as a in obtaining these numbers.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to just add a follow-up question to Susan's when you're finished.
I think for the traffic.
We feel very comfortable with these numbers now that we we've obtained actual data at operating facility, medical facilities in Rhode Island.
I'm sorry, before I move on, so the last report I just picked up, which was the one of the sites across the street, it said it was basing its data on on the business in Portsmouth. It wasn't basing it on a, you know, recreational operation in Massachusetts, it was basing it on traffic in Portsmouth. And that was only three months ago. So I guess I'm confused about a 50% drop in. Anticipated traffic. And if it is indeed 100 cars per hour trying to exit Dale Carlia Road out onto Kingstown Road. I think we're going to be in a pickle. So that's just my point. So I'll pass it over to Maria. Thanks.
So I I am concerned that your most recent data is. Has been done in 2020 and wondering, thinking that perhaps the COVID situation may have had an impact. On the numbers because it is quite a difference in daily trips as as Susan mentioned. Also, I think that it's important to. Realize that this is part of the 108 corridor. That is part of the corridor that goes to and from the university. And what you're describing as your peak hours also coincide with. Classes letting out at URI and also our secondary schools in South Kingstown. Release as well. So I I think those things need to be considered.
Thank you, Maria. Mr. Bannon, this is Steve. In regards to the level of service for the the roadways connected to the site. Has there been any significant changes in the level of service?
No, the. Level of service of a downtown road like this would be. Resultant level of service of the signalized intersections because that controls your flow. Otherwise, it's it's free flow. So it's your main intersections, the Indian Run access, signalized access, that operates at level service B because it's very little traffic. Coming in and out of in the Indian Run Village. That that trips that signal on a regular basis. Your your main is is Tower Hill Road. And, you know, the Department of Transportation has made major improvements there in the last five years. With, you know, turn lanes and and controls to improve operations. That's your main. Section downtown that controls. Or affects delay through the downtown area.
So based on what you just said, has there been any change in the level of service at those intersections?
No, not based on what I'm reviewing the. RSA that was done, completed by the Department of Transportation recently for that roadway project.
Okay, and and I think that's some of the other projects you have testified at, we did. We did discuss particularly at opening. Contacting the the police department and having a traffic officers there for the opening. Until we get a feel on on what this retail space would do in regards to the traffic impact.
And I think we. As part of the TRC that was that was mentioned and we indicated. We'll work with the public safety officials and if we need to tweak anything or have an officer there at a particular time, we work with town.
Before I open this up to attendees to question the traffic engineer, any comments from staff for the.
Steve, this is Paul Jordan.
I'm sorry, Paul.
So. You know, admittedly newest person on the board here, I don't know all the rules. I'm sorry, Jake, could you bring that parking lot back up again? I think the the design of the parking captured the stormwater, you know, visually, it's going to be more appealing from the street. I certainly share Susan's concern about Dale Collier Street and getting in and out of that other. Driveway in front of Job Lot. So peak hour, 40, 40 visits per hour, 18 to 24 employees on site during the peak hour?
Yes.
So I'm looking at the parking lot and I can see that Job Lot has has Benny's did in the past. You know, they have a fenced off area in the northeast corner of the lot. There're probably 12 or 13 spaces there, they're they're using for outside storage. I understand that there are probably enough parking spaces in the lot, but it's the configuration that worries me. You know, we've got this tiny little building that serviced. A travel agent that probably had, you know, a few visitors an hour. You know, it's all all sort of concentrated in that one corner in front of the compassion center. I mean, I was there today, taking into consideration the piles of snow in the lot. The time of day is about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, CBS, you know, that time of day is a disaster. This strikes me that there's a big bottleneck happening right in that corner and I don't know. I mean, certainly just walking through that parking lot at peak hour with people coming and going from Subway, the restaurants, Ocean State and the compassion center. The concerns about getting in and out of Kingstown Road. I mean, I have no objections to proposed use, I just can't imagine it. Working out well. We've got 18 to 24 employees parking on site along with all the Job Lot employees. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just really concerned about how this is going to work. Just the traffic flow to the parking lot, even coming in from the.
The employees would be parking.
I'm sorry?
The the employees we're parking in the northwest corner of the lot away from your patron parking. I think we have like 75 parking spaces immediately in front. Along the road and and within the main parking field.
But I'm also just looking at this entrance now, the the northern entrance. And I can't remember what's there now, but it looks like now you've got to come in. And you're either going to drive past the front of all these businesses with the pedestrians that are getting in and out. Or you've got, maybe you're forced to make a U-turn. And come in on, you know, find your parking space on the east side of that lot. It just, it just looks like a big bottleneck as far as traffic in there. I mean, it just. Compared to the prior use with a handful of visitors versus 40 visitors an hour, it just.
This is, it is an intensification of use. But we feel that we have adequate parking. Front. To service that customer base.
I I would argue that CBS doesn't have adequate.
Based on.
Sometimes pull into CBS and have to cool your heels for five or 10 minutes to find somebody backing out. Sometimes pull into CBS and have to cool your heels for five or ten minutes to find somebody backing out. It just seems like a um a big intensification of use, that's all I have to say.
Any other questions from board members? Susan?
Hi, sorry, thank you. Um, this is Susan. Can I ask questions now that aren't traffic or should I save those till later?
Let's, I'd like to open up to attendees to see if they had any questions for the traffic engineer and then we'll we'll move on to the landscaping and. In the parking issue, I think that'll probably have a few more questions from everybody. So if there's anybody in the uh in the audience that would like to ask a question of the traffic engineer, please raise your hand. Alright, I I see none, so. I guess we can move on to uh the landscaping and the the parking configuration, so Susan, if you wanna go ahead with your question.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions about the building. First, I read in your narrative that two out of the three owners are approving these changes. Can someone address who's not happy about these changes and what's going on with, you know, owner approval of this?
Yes, it's it's not a matter of of a unit owner not being happy. We we were able to secure the signatures, as you know, for the. Unit one and unit two owners and we are um working on obtaining the consent for the third.
Okay, thank you. Can I also ask about um that in the space that you have as as your active space? Can I can I understand exactly where in that the Thai restaurant is? I think their doors are just to the right of your compassion center doors. But I don't understand because it says they're located in unit number two. Is the Thai restaurant leaving? Or do I just misunderstand where the doors are here?
Yeah, so Christine, I'm um you answered the question in terms of the restaurant. Um, this is the main entrance for unit one, and then this is the entrance for the Thai restaurant. I'm not sure if you can see my.
We can't, Mr. Bannon.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, Cassa.
That's alright, Jay's uh sharing, um yeah, thank you, that is the Thai restaurant entrance. And that other egress uh to the left of it is the unit one entrance.
So the Thai restaurant's not going anywhere, it's just that little space, that space that you're in now is the Thai restaurant.
And I believe they have a portion of the uh unit two.
Okay. Um, Ken, I'm sorry, my last question, is this new configuration going to eliminate the Thai restaurant's outdoor dining area?
Um, I am unaware of.
Right where that dot is, in that corner, there's, that's their outdoor seating, and that's, I think, how they survived COVID, was having that outdoor space. Will that remain in the new plans?
There's no proposal to change anything in that area.
But it looks like you're extending, are you extending a sidewalk there that hash marked?
That is just hash mark, um it's just striping in terms of um being able to have uh someone. I- in an ADA spot still have a uh crosswalk up to any one of the units and then have a striped path into the building.
Got it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, I have a another question similar to Susan's relative to the building.
Yep.
Um, in the plans, um there is a dotted line. That shows um in area that is uh not being used. Or it said something like not vacant, not in scope, can you explain exactly where that is and how it fits into the plan? It was on seat sheet C two.
Yeah, I think that's the area of the Thai restaurant.
Okay.
Um, Jay is gonna, there you go. And so the floor plan to the right is just the first floor of the unit. And um you can see that the grado area with its own entrance, I believe that's some or all of the Thai restaurant. Um, and then we'll be taking the remainder of that first floor with the main entrance. Um, but we'll also be taking the entire basement, um which is shown on that left-handed layout. That left-handed floor plan, excuse me.
Okay.
I think that's just the architect's nomenclature, that it's just not in contract, but not in his contract in terms of drawing.
Okay, um also, I just think it's worth noting, um in the project narrative on page six. You list the pending licenses, uh license uh through DBR and it's zone five. And there are actually seven towns, you left Westerly out, it's South Kingstown, Westerly, Hopkinton, Exeter, Charlestown, Richmond. And Narragansett, um which this site would would serve um to to be clear. Also, something related to what Pam said in your narrative on page six. Um, you're saying that this um project is not located in the immediate vicinity of residential properties. Um, I think it would be a disservice to not refer to the fact that the um. There is a Holly um Holly Street project that um owned by the same property owner, actually. Um, that is in the review stages, and I think that it's important that that is referenced. Um, in the documents and in any kind of narrative. So it residences on Holly, um it should be in the narrative, it should be in the um document for Mr. Pimental. Because it's relevant.
Which, if I may ask, I'm so sorry, Ms. Mack, what what part of the narrative are you referring to? I I missed your reference, I thought.
So um page six, three point one is in the general narrative, it's also referred to in Mr. Pimental's um narrative as well. And I believe there's a reference uh in the traffic study.
And what is the. Commercial neighborhood.
So it's it's north of Wakefield Pediatrics.
It's north of what? I'm so sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, Ms. Mack.
It's um north of Wakefield Pediatrics and it's called the residences on Holly.
And what is that you wanted to?
Well, in your documents, you you say that there are no, uh there's no impact on any residences and those are. Uh, tho- those will be um a- approved, they're already in process. And um I think there should be a reference to that.
I keep, Mr. Chairman, Jamie Ravis. The existing. Clarity, just for clarity, uh Maria, to your point, which is very valid. Those are in the permitting process, they are potentially proposed units, they are not units that have final approval to be built.
I I and and on that point, I don't see how we could possibly mention those, um if they're, if they have not yet been approved.
I I think there, I think the point that Ms. Mack is making is that there. There is a permitting process in the queue associated with additional residential in the area. It, I think it's a valid point, I'm not sure how you would address it, since they haven't been received final approval yet. But there is the potential for additional residential in the neighborhood in close proximity to this proposed site. And I think that's the point that Maria is making as well as others.
And I just, I I am very um appreciative of of. The the concerns in that they're being shared with us. I, obviously, the the um professionals who prepare these reports would would not have a m- a means to to know that. I don't know if it would be necessary to make those changes within the reports when they have not been yet approved. But the other, the other concern I have is just trying to get down to what. The actual concern of the town is in that those zoning ordinance itself with respect to the compassion centers. Puts no restrictions on the location of the compassion centers vis a vis residences, so I just wanna be clear about that for the record. They never made that a a consideration or a criteria like they did with other um establishments, schools and daycare centers. But thank you.
Okay, uh any other questions about the parking and landscaping design?
Well, we really haven't gotten to the landscaping yet. Um, I believe the applicant has um their landscape architect here this evening. And we um have only seen a very um uh basic plan. Um, there's a reference in the staff comments that without knowing the actual um number and size of plants. It's difficult to know if it complies with our landscape requirements. So perhaps that would be the next.
I think Joe referenced that earlier on that they hadn't completed a plan, but.
Yeah.
Joe, you wanna uh address that or bring in the landscape architect?
Um, I mean Diane is here if we wanna get into the specifics. Um, we we put together a conceptual plan in terms of, you know. We wanted to show you pictorially, street trees, number of street trees, um landscaped areas, shrubbed areas. But they're not specifics and um this can certainly be a stipulation to our approval. Um, that we would work with the staff in terms of a final landscape plan. Um, if you would like to discuss specific species, I know that we had drilled down a little bit in the TRC meeting. In terms of street trees, having root barriers and specific species that would, um you know, wouldn't preclude. Uh, them from being put near sidewalks um and and pavement. But Diane's here and and be happy to answer questions if there's a specific, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, Maria, did you have a, did you wanna specific?
Well, it's certainly, um it it's easier to to critique a plan when you, when it's more specific in nature. Um, and and that makes it very difficult for us to to look at this and make comments. Um, I I would point out that in the narrative, there's a reference to the soils, which are UR, urban land. Which means they have been um brought onto the site and generally require an onsite analysis in order to determine the suitability. So that should be, that's something that should occur so that um an appropriate landscape plan can be developed. Based on on the the correct criteria, but again, it's it's kind of a generic plan. And I I would like to see more detail um so that I can look at it in advance and then make comments. But certainly, Ms. Soul, um anything that you would like to give us in terms of information would be great.
If I may just interject, um yes, if we haven't done so already for the drainage pertinences in each one of those corners. We will um take soil evaluations and we'll be able to determine um the suitability of those specific soils for landscaping.
Uh, yeah, to speak on the fire retention areas, we will be designing those according to the. Right, um most recent two thousand and ten stormwater uh design guidelines. And if you look at the chart at the upper right-hand corner, um there are references to minimum uh plant sizes. And and we are meeting all the minimum requirements, a- and you're right, this is, this is a very conceptual plan, we're just suggesting uh certain species. And as the plans go forward, we will uh be providing a detailed plant list with sizes and and um. Quantities as well as species.
Diane, for the, can you just identify yourself and your profession for the record, please?
Sure, Diane Soul, uh Diane Soul and Associates, I'm a registered landscape architect in Rhode Island.
Good, thank you. Uh, Jamie or Jay, should this project move forward, they they get a a license from the state? And they have their approval from the zoning board, would they have to uh, would they have to submit a landscaping plan before they could uh get a building permit?
Not with a, this is Jay, not without a specific condition of the planning board requiring them to do that.
Alright, so we we could add that.
However, it 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 is part of your review and it it does um leave it a little open-ended. Uh after the fact, you know, if, trying to get them back to comply with the regulations. I mean, if they, if they, once again, if they can't comply with the requirement, the landscape requirements at that point. It will require another trip back to the planning board, I mean, I I think at this point. It it's up to the pla- it's up to the board, it's up to you guys.
Wait, so you're saying you'd like, you'd like to see a more uh detailed landscape plan?
I, well, i- it's part of the review process, the landscaping is a specific requirement of the DPR and uh to that effect. While you, we can tolerate certain levels of uh unknowns. I think when you're looking at a conceptual plan and then saying, okay, we'll look at this later. It 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 potentially could be a bit of a headache after if there are difficulties in. Meeting the the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if if you were to entertain any movement forward on the application. I think it would be germane to the commission to try and clarify their concerns. Right now, you have an application that shows street trees along Kingston Road, some understory planting at the main entrance on one oh eight. Uh, some additional understory on the side street. There's a little bit of a conflict between landscape plan and site plan about the installation of a landscape island at the intersection of Holly Street. And Dale Carley Drive, um which I would, I'll go into further in a, in a moment, once the board's through. Uh, but again, clarifying that of, you know, you could say a final landscape plan shall be submitted prior to the visions of a building. Review and approved by the planning board. So long as there's some criteria contained within there, that you're looking for that perimeter, street tree landscaping, you're looking for that understory planting. You're looking for foundation planting, you're looking for the installation of the islands. Um, versus, you know, what it, to Jay's point, what are you looking at? You know, where are you recognizing that there is uh an essence difficulty associated with interior landscaping? And do you agree with that? Um, if you were re-reviewing a plan, what are you re-reviewing? You know, in a final set, to Maria's point, it's hard to comment on a plan that's uh. Uh, basic and preliminary in nature, uh but I think you could bring some clarity to what your expectations were. As a planning board and any plan that came back before you. I know there were some conversations with commission board members about uh doing some foundation plans on the southern elevation. Uh, with the extension of a sidewalk all the way to Holly Street and a landscape island that would anchor that intersection, so.
Um, I I certainly agree with Jamie that um and Jay, um this board has not in the past approved projects. That haven't come in with all of the uh details that are relevant and necessary for this stage of review. Um, and I would certainly like to see those, and again, without being able to comment on species or um numbers. I see that in the parking lot, there are end caps that are cross-hatched. Um, in the uh four, five areas. And um wondering if those are planned to have some kind of a a berm around them and be planted. I think that is a very good idea, since this area is a sea of asphalt. And it would help to further delineate the spaces, improve safety. Um, slow people down when they're entering the parking area. And also um referencing what Jamie just um said. Where the, on the southern section of the property on Dale Carlia Street. You can see that on the side entrance, there are, there's an area of green um along the entrance. It would be my recommendation to add plantings as well as the sidewalk that Jamie mentioned to Holly Street. That would help to um mitigate some of the runoff and im- improve the area as a whole.
Yeah, I would concur with that, and I would like it, I think it would also act as a uh traffic calming effect because that road is so wide at that point. Um, that would, that would be a good suggestion.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, as it's shown on one of their other plans, it may be on the overall. plans, it may be on the overall site plan, Jay, if you can scroll through that.
Yeah, or it's in our PowerPoint.
Yeah, make Joe, Mr. Caselli, it may be in your PowerPoint where you did show in essence a intersection island in your PowerPoint.
Yeah, there, there, I know we had it in earlier iterations and we removed it. We thought because of the loading zone, we've put that back in. And there's room between those three proposed parallel spaces on the southern face to extend a sidewalk up the totality of Dale Collier to the intersection of Holly.
With, with some foundation plantings? Joe, I think you have just enough room.
I do. I think we have because we're changing that from 45 degree to parallel while we're losing a few spaces. Yes, there is room for a five-foot wide sidewalk and maybe a three-foot. I mean, I don't have the exact, but I'm sure we can craft something in there and we can tie that into that intersection type area, Jay, thank you, that intersection type area at Holly and Dale Collie. So that's, we can, if that's the board's preference, we certainly can craft that in there.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions from board members? Or we do have somebody in the audience that has their hand raised that's been very patient. If, Jay, if you want, can we, looks like Judith Frank.
Judith, if you can unmute yourself here.
Thank you. I'm Judith's husband. My name is Joe Matoney and I own the property directly across the street from unit one at 30 Holly Street. The building that currently occupies my accounting firm and my five employees. There's also an attorney in our building and there is a designer in our draftsman designer who also has a business in our building. And I am very concerned about the, the parking and the traffic. One of the things I noticed, I'm sorry, I had difficulty technically getting my hand up. I didn't know how to use the technology, but, so thank you for, and I hope you indulge me just for a second. One of the things, I just wonder why they're asking for a waiver from the Department of Transportation since 108 is a state road and they have closed off one of the entrances. I think that'll put a great deal more pressure on the entrance and the exits from Dale Carlia. My office is directly across the street from that intersection and I can tell you that it is very crowded and a stop sign there will, will not take it, take care of things. I'm also very concerned about parking on Holly Street. My building has, you know, a number, seven or eight professionals and we do have clients to visit and we try to keep the curb parking in front of our building open for our clients. I think it would be just irresistible if you were going to go to the compassion center to park there and just walk around this, the corner. You don't have to mess with the parking lot. So I'm very concerned with parking. Also Holly Street is a very dangerous street. I go to lunch from my office over to Belmont and to cross with that flag on Main Street with much, a great deal of increased traffic is also of great concern to me. Finally, it was represented at the beginning that the unit one was previously occupied by Yankee Travel. Yankee Travel was still in operation and I spoke to the owner Candy, who is the owner of Yankee Travel. And she told me that she was assured by her condo owner that this project would not go through, that one of the other alternatives would and not to worry about it, that this would not be approved. So I think she, it was truly misrepresented to her and she, you know, kind of discouraged me from attending, but I just admit, I'm astounded that there can be 18 to 24 employees and the, the customers are going to exit through the rear door directly across the street from my office. I would think it'd be irresistible for them not to want to park in front of my office. So I think I, I really appreciate the diligence of the planning folks who've, who've questioned this because I, I just am, am very concerned and very upset. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Matoney. Board members, any other questions or concerns?
I, I have a few, but if anyone else has some, I would let them go first.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of, just a point of reference. I just wanted to clarify that the exit will be in the front. It will, the entrance and exit will be the same door. There is no exit out onto Holly Street.
For the employees?
For the, no.
That rear entrance is only for deliveries?
Only for deliveries.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I guess I'd like a consensus from the board members, how they feel about the the lack of detail in the landscape plan and whether they want to try to spell out as Jamie suggested, or whether we want to see a more detailed landscape plan. That's really the kind of the crux of the, the issue right now.
Well, as, as you probably realize, I would like to see a, a proper plan before weighing in on the landscaping. I also have a few other questions related to some of the waivers that they're asking for, some of the security proposals. So.
If I, if I could just interject here again, I'm just on two points. The, we had a discussion at the TRC relative to the landscaping and I think there was a, a certainly there was a level of comfort with respect to the manner in which the landscaping was shown on the submitted plan. And so much so that the planning staff and its project review memo sets forth the recommended motion, making the landscape a condition for the certificate of occupancy. So the Rhode Island licensed landscape architect in this instance, Diane Soul, would have to submit a more detailed plan and that would have to be approved, obviously by the town. That's, that's something that I, something that I want to mention. No, I, I understand that. I know it's just advisory, but the other thing that I wanted to.
What they're approving is to move it forward to the planning board and based on the suggestions or the comments that you heard at the TRC, when you come to the planning board, you're prepared. So as, as.
But, but we've been.
As Jay stated, usually we have a more detailed landscape plan.
And the other, the other thing that I wanted to mention, which is, which has been a, a point that we've made with the town at prior times and naturally you wouldn't have had the benefit to, to, to hear that argument, but we've, we've maintained that we, this is a shopping center, a pre-existing shopping center with the pre-existing conditions. We were looking to help the situation by making suggestions on the, the parking layout and the landscaping to, for, for the benefit of the applicant clearly as well as the town, but the proposed use is within a shopping center as that word is defined in this town zoning ordinance. The performance standards for the development plan review, all the things that you're talking about now, the landscaping and so forth, do not apply to this subject application for the medical marijuana dispensary use. This is the clear reading of section 505, 1B, 2C, which exempts a change of use occurring within a shopping center from being subject to the performance standards. And the practical effect of that exemption is that it would obviate the need for the waivers and relative, you know, to the landscaping and perhaps other existing features on the site. So this, you know, we are here to cooperate. We absolutely want to be the, you know, the best tenant there. We want it to work for the town residents, for the town and for the applicant, of course. And we feel as though we've tried to listen very, very strongly and attentively to all comments that have come our way, whether it's through the TRC, the planning department and whatnot, to make these improvements, to look at the access points, to, to suggest the proposed installation of the landscaping, to talk about making sure that when we put the trees in at the sidewalk, you know, we would have the proper species so that we wouldn't have to be concerned about the roots growing and, and, and burdening the sidewalks and so forth. All of that, we want to comply. We want to address the concerns, but the reality is, is that this project is not subject to those performance standards. It just isn't. It's as clear as day in that, in that ordinance and we're looking to be part of this process so we can ultimately get to the special use application, which is, especially to use permit rather, application which is mandated for these medical marijuana uses, as you well know now, having seen three prior proposals.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify a point.
Go ahead.
Planting Director, under that section, item 2A, any application coming before the commission that's proposing to enlarge a loading facility is subject to design review. So if you're not changing anything.
Under the exemption section?
No, 2A.
I know, but that's, that's not addressing the exemption section for the shopping centers. That's just the regular, that's giving.
Are you, you are, are you?
One person at a time, please.
Are you, are you not proposing a loading facility at the rear of the building different than what exists today?
Mr. Rabbit, I, I believe that we are introducing a new loading area.
Correct. So 2A requires you to come and permit under the DPR.
No, because the DPR lists very specifically all the, all the occurrences or events that would trigger a DPR review.
And A is to enlarge an off-street parking or loading facility.
But that's irrelevant because the other, the other, there could be 20 other reasons to come before the DPR. It's saying that it's, there's an exemption specifically for shopping centers for the very reason that every time a tenant comes in with a new proposal, they're going to have to go through landscaping reviews and parking analysis. That wasn't the intent of the ordinance clearly because they exempted the shopping center, saying that the change of use within a shopping center would not trigger the DPR review.
Except when you're adding a loading facility.
It does not say that. I'm sorry, with all due respect, Mr. Rabbit, and I, and I do respectfully say that. It's, it does not, does not.
Before the board discusses this anymore, let's, any more comments from the public before the board has a discussion on this and where we want to head with it? If you would like to comment, please raise your hand. I see none. Board members, how do you feel about where we're at with this and where we stand with the landscaping?
I think we have a ways to go. I would certainly like some clarification from our legal counsel relative to Article 7, Section 711 and Article 9, Section 907 relative to see that the granting of a special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. In doing so, the board shall consider whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made or will be made concerning, not limited to the following matters where applicable, ingress and egress to the lot and to assisting or proposed structures. The thereon with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire emergency or catastrophe. There's another reference, five screening and buffering reference to type dimensions and character. I, I think that we should have more information. I know that I had some additional questions such as, in the project narrative, it talks about 18 employees and Mr. Caselli said that could be actually 24 employees inside. And I'm wondering how then with 20 to 25 or up to 40 an hour, the space inside with 14 POS stations, how that would work and will be, would there be people standing outside, particularly in our current pandemic situation? Also in the narrative, there's a reference to the class one survey not being completed. I think it's a waiver. But also in the narrative, it says that that doing so may turn up other encumbrances on project sites. So I'm wondering why we don't know about that. So that's just a couple of thoughts and I would like more information and think that this is not complete. Perhaps our legal counsel can help with some of these questions.
Rich, while legal counsel is digesting all that, did you have any comment on the soil one evaluation?
What was that Steve on the, on the, on the which?
Maria was talking about the soil one survey.
Class one survey?
Excuse me, class one.
Yeah, class one, yeah. I, I, it's generally, I'm more concerned about a class one survey if they were redeveloping the site because then I'm, I'm more concerned about setbacks and things like that. And, you know, the, the fact that buildings are going to be placed on the site, in this case, because it's all existing, I'm not as concerned. I still think that, you know, for a development like this, you know, you would think you would have a class one survey. I agree that it really would be a relatively, I think, an easy thing to do and I think it's always a good thing to have. I'm frankly, I'm a little surprised there's not one out there. You know, even with the, this, this property was, was changed, changed hands recently. I would have thought that maybe, you know, even an alto would have been done or something along those lines that could have been brought into a class, a class one. I think that maybe Joe Casali may be able to address that a little better, but.
Excuse me, we did not, um, we did not ask and say that we're not going to provide a class one. There is a class one and it exists and it's recorded in the land evidence records. And our response was that we pointed to that class one on the land evidence records. Because as you know, our law requires condo documents to have a class one service.
That's right. That's right. That's why I'm saying, I was a little surprised there wouldn't be one out there, but why wouldn't you have just submitted that as the existing conditions on this?
We, we had just used that as, you know, we had submitted the book and page and in terms of existing conditions because of the lottery, the proposal was, you can see it as it is, it's just on an area, but if we've got to start, you know, having construction documents, well, that's a different level of, of service. But like you said, when you're not, when you already have a class one on file in the land evidence records and we're not proposing any building alterations, it just seemed to fit right into what the staff report was in terms of reason why the waivers make.
But it does bring up the question. I think Maria's got a, a good point is that if you're not, if you didn't develop a class one, then how did you develop your base data on this? I mean, if the class one was an older, was it an older class one where it was, you know, you didn't have the CAD data or what CAD, CAD data did you use? Did you piece it together from, you know, GIS data or, or how did you develop it?
Right. As you can see, all this is in terms of, of an aerial overlay and you're showing conceptual curb lines and in terms of parking lots and where you're going to, where you're going to be able to put things.
But modifying parking and, and squeezing it all in and, I mean, it would be, I think, beneficial. Well, actually, so.
So that would be.
Also, but it would also be a, it would be a, you know, you're looking more at a class three survey, which would be particularly important. Right, right. And, and, but, but I'm saying they would all relate to, you know, Right, right. And, and, but, but I'm saying it would all relate to, you know, a sufficient boundary as well. So, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, you understand that.
I do. And the same with the, we understand the, the butter's concern. We're not asking for a waiver not to garnish official alteration permit. We're just asking that that be a stipulation of approval. And we, we will file the state, the, the PAP with the D, with, with the DOT.
Right. You know, while I, while I have your ear, I, and Steve, if you, if you don't mind, I, I may add, I want to add just another comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I do, you know, this is all part of the Indian Run and tributaries and ultimately the, you know, the mighty Sagatucket, right? So we, we, we like to, we, we had a study done years ago on this Dale Collier area and, and all businesses all the way down. And it was all to address water quality so that as developments like this happen, that we address water quality in the process. And I believe that you've done that here and I appreciate that. I think that any little bit helps and there's been other developments proposed in this area, similar type uses. And we've asked of the same thing on each one. So I appreciate that. The only concern I have though, guys, Dan and Joe, is that, that when, now you're, you're creating these, these ponds. Right now, water kind of comes across that whole parking lot as sheet flows and it goes over to the state system. I just ask that you make the request to tie in any overflows directly to the catch basins so that we don't have a point discharge going across the sidewalk. I'm just getting started. It's a little easier when it's sheet flow to walk the sidewalk in the rain. But when it's a point discharge and it's a river, just keeping in mind that when you go to DOT that you make that, you know, that type of request. That's all I'm asking.
That's very fair.
And I do have a lot of concerns about the traffic. I, I, I share, I believe Ms. Axelrod's concerns that Dale Collier, that, that little roadway is particularly difficult. I don't think the right-hand turn is a difficult turn. The problem is, and I, I think that, I think that Paul Bannon brought it up, that, you know, many of the, many of the, the maneuvers may be to the south. You know, this does service a big area, the service areas to the south. Problem is people try to go across three lanes to get over to the turn lane to go down Old Tower Hill Road. And that's the problem getting out of that thing. You can go a left hand, a right-hand turn out of this, out of that roadway and head straight through the intersection and get on Route one south easy enough, but people don't do that. What they do is they try to take a left-hand turn. So it is a particularly difficult spot. I do think that the numbers that you're using are, I mean, 1,800 vehicles in the peak hour on, on Kingstown Road sound to me about right. It's a very, very highly traveled roadway. But, but, you know, and, and I share John, John Schock of my department's concern. I believe we brought it up at technical review that we, that we, the town is just allowed to revisit this site should it, you know, it continued through the process, it gets developed. We just want to be able to revisit and address traffic concerns as they come up down the line. And I would just ask the, the board to, to keep that in mind. You know, should this move forward at some point today or in the future, that we just make that, that recommendation or that stipulation that it, that the town can revisit those traffic issues should they come up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Well, we still, we still have Rich online. Can I ask Rich a question?
Yes, please.
Rich, I just noticed this, I didn't catch it earlier. DPS are going to be okay with street, with trees in, within, well, that's actually not ours, is it? That's the state.
Yeah, I mean, they would have to show up on the state and, and like I, I believe that, that Joe mentioned was that the state submission would show a landscape plan, it would have to. And I, I, I would, I do think, and again, it gets a sidewalk in the maintenance, the point discharge of water is a problem. Also, we would ask that the, the, a, a roof barrier be installed along that, along that stretch. We already have problems a little bit further down with, with CVS and some of the roots lifting sidewalks. But that's sort of, you know, it's sort of food for thought more than anything, but I would ask that that be included as well. Good point, Joe.
Yeah, so just if I may, Jay, follow up. You know, when we filed the PAP, the state highway line will need to be shown. And the intent would be to have all the street trees within our property. If, if at some point we could not, anything within the state right of way would be what they would be permitting the DOT. But it would be our intent, the basis of our design, to keep all of those street trees within our side of the state highway line.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, it's a little after nine. We typically take a break at nine. Do you want to plow on through this or would you like to take a break? Board members, any response? Break or continue?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Seems we're getting pretty close.
Let me just ask a quick question.
Okay.
One of the waivers is, is a waiver from the requirement for submitting a PAP. So I'm confused about what you just said, Mr. Caselli.
It, it's Paul, it's just, um, it's the waiver to, that we do not have the physical alteration permit in hand at the time of the DPR decision. So we're asking that you allow that as a stipulation that, that the approval would be contingent upon DOT's approval.
Mr. Haddon, did you have any comments to Maria's questions? Are you still working on them?
Yeah. Christine, did I say that correctly? Does that make sense to you?
Yes, absolutely.
Mark, did you? You're muted. Mark, you're muted. There you go.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I would, I would need to know a little bit more about what Ms. Mack would like me to address as far as a legal issue.
So, sure, I, I think I referenced a section.
Ask him one at a time.
Sure. There is a section of the zoning ordinance, Article nine, section nine oh seven, that's related to variances and special use permits. And there are criteria relative to the granting of the special use permit. If you look at C and then below C is the first, it's one, which is related to ingress and egress and further down, it's related to screening and buffering. The impression that I was given from legal counsel for the applicant is that these, this criteria is, is somehow exempt from, from our review. And the question that I'm asking you is, are, are these criteria relevant for our review this evening?
Mark, Mark, I, just to help you.
Can you let Mark answer the question, please?
No, but I, it wasn't.
I'd like Mark to answer the question.
You're speaking specifically of, from the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes.
All right. And are, and, and your, your question is whether the zoning ordinance requires them to have development plan review?
Well, no. Are, are the criterion, actually, if you look at the staff comments, they are outlined on page four of the, the staff comments entitled, "The Whining Road Compassion Center Advisory Development Plan Review, December 22nd, 2020." And so there is language from the zoning ordinance that specifies criteria that an applicant would need to comply with. And it's my understanding that those things are valid. And the impression that we've been given from the legal counsel of the applicant is that there's some kind of exemption. So the question that I'm asking you is, are these relevant and valid?
I see what you mean now. Thank you very much. Argument was based upon exemptions found in subdivision regulations relating to development plan review. Rather, I'm sorry, performance standards under section 505.1 of the zoning ordinance. The, the essence is that I had given the opinion, along with the planning director, relating to whether they needed to go through the development plan review process. And I discussed my opinion with, with the planning director and we both agreed that they had to go through it. I discussed that with the counsel for the, the applicant. I understood and appreciated her point of view, but I disagreed with it. And so they had already started the development plan review process before I ever even got involved and then we even had that discussion. So they had submitted for development plan review long before I even had that discussion with them. So that was ongoing. Those, so the standards as required by development plan review do apply. You'd be giving a, an advisory recommendation to the zoning board relating to whether the development plan review, as you review it, and, and to the extent that that has an effect on those elements that they must find before giving a special use permit. So whether, whether they had to go through development plan review or not, all those things in development plan review that you, you all discussing right now are, in many ways, the essence of what the zoning board is going to have to want to know, have to, and have to rule on when they decide whether there's an SUP that's going to be granted. So it, it, it's not that if they didn't have to go to development plan review that they would be exempt from many of these things that you're discussing tonight and the things that you and your recommendation or to the zoning board for the SUP will, in essence, be doing some work for everybody to get the right issues in the forefront so that the zoning board could look at what has happened before and come to a decision as to whether they are going to grant the SUP or not. And so the way I view it, they ought to be in development plan review. And the way I view it is that development plan review helps everybody, the applicant and the boards, to come to a rational decision, to make the decision on all those elements that the zoning ordinance requires the zoning board to make before they will grant an SUP.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
It's not a matter of duplication of effort here. One leads to the other. And again, and, and many of these things are advisory as to whether they will grant an SUP, but they will make the final decision based upon a good record of things that have been explained, clarified, made perhaps a little bit more detailed and complete so that when they see it, they can make the decision and move on all in one shot. That's why you have technical review committee, development plan review. And then the zoning board makes the ultimate decision on the zoning issue is whether a special use permit can, and the use as proposed will go forward. Remember, they, they don't have, as of right, the right to put a marijuana facility there. It is, it is permitted under the zoning ordinance, under the use code, section one, 100 for that particular zone. It is only available by special use permit. Special use permit requires a whole host of things that the zoning board has to rule on. And these things that you're looking at in detail right now are those things that, are those seeds that will hopefully grow into a, a decision of, of the board at that time.
Thank you, Mark. You know, with the other projects we have looked at, we have had, as Maria said, very detailed landscape plans. So I do, I hear Jay's concerns that it's, it's not detailed. It's, it's green shading on, on a map with very little detail. I appreciate the, the change in entrances and exits that made on this project. I think it's important, especially for Dale Collier Street. But I'm hesitant and I would like the input of us of the board where they stand on that landscape. If, if they want further detail now, then we need to continue with, to the next meeting and, and have them provide more details. So board members, how do you feel?
Steve, this is Paul Jordan. I do think we need additional details on the landscaping. I would also ask, and, and Maria found what I had sort of stumbled into earlier about that, the parking and the, the traffic through the parking lot and that, you know, Article nine, section nine oh seven, C1 ingress and egress to the lot, particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety. If there's anything that can be done with this design to route traffic through the parking lot, you know, give some consideration to keeping traffic flow away from that heavily traveled area in front of the businesses. And I don't know if, you know, just striping in the parking lot is enough to do that. You know, it may take away a few spaces. It seems like you have enough space, maybe to give up a few. But if there's a way to route traffic through there, I would feel much better about that. What I just think is a, a really busy, busy corner right there, right in front of the compassion center. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Joe?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of. Overall, I'm supportive of the project and I think what the applicant is proposing is a good improvement over what's there. But I am supportive of Maria's request for the final landscape plan. I think the additional details will generate some additional dialogue, which ends up being good for the applicant and this being the center of our town, good for our citizens. So I'm supportive of requesting the additional details.
Okay. Dan?
I would agree with Joe and Maria. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, like Joe, I'm, I, I think it's a good project. I think, I think the landscaping is not my, my forte. Everyone on this, we have other people on this board that love that, you know, that handle that well. One thing I do want to just mention, you know, it doesn't matter what people's preference for marijuana or medication of marijuana, but I, it's, it upsets me or frustrates me when I hear people say, oh, we're so many feet like from a residence. Biggest drug dealer in town is right next door at CVS. All kinds of stuff that no one's talking about. So I get the residents, I mean, the, the state, the feds, whoever have said that this is a medicine for people that use it. And I think we should respect it and treat it that way. And right next door, they're giving away way worse stuff, so.
Well, again, I, I, I agree a lot, a lot of what you said. I'm, I'm not the landscape expert either. But what we've heard tonight certainly leaves much to be desired. And I think it's critical that we know how it's going to be laid out and how those entrances are going to be landscaped. So it, it looks like we're going to need to continue this to the January 26th meeting and ask the applicant to provide more details on the parking area, the traffic flow, flow through that, and if they can make any improvements there. And obviously the details on the landscaping.
And questions about relative number of employees and customers to the site itself, as far as capacity and.
Yeah, I mean, there, it seems like the employee count is pretty high. I mean, it's almost one to one to customers per hour, so. It's.
Could I ask, could I ask Rich a question while he's here?
Yes.
Has there been any consideration of trying to tie in the parking light that's in front of Indian Run with an exit for this parking lot? Is that a thing?
Well, yeah, I mean, it is a thing and, but it's not something we discussed. You know, I mean, I'm looking at it now in the early, it's not something we discussed. You know, it would, that, that, that would be a significant endeavor. I mean, it would be modifying that light, that traffic light to be a four-way light. You know, it'd be a whole different thing. And it would really be something that would have to go through. You know, it'd be a DOT thing more than, more than us, but we did not ask that. I mean, the, the, as far, you know, the furthest we got, I mean, you know, was really extending some of the, that, that center turn lane. That was as, as far as we got. I think that would make a significant change, a, a, a good enough change for the exit from this site, hoping that people use. Hoping that people use the the exit onto Kingstown Road and not go the Dale Collier Street, you know.
Thanks.
I don't know if that answers your question.
It did. Thank you.
My my only suggestion at this point is that we're all clear on what details you you were looking for. So the applicant has some direction as to where to go and how to respond. And the next time they care, we don't have any issues of, we told you to do that. No, you didn't tell me to do that. Or and and that and that sort of thing. And I think it's not for you, it's their plan. It's not for you to create their plan for them either. I'm not saying that. So I understand that that aspect of it. But I would just ask, we all trying to be as clear as possible, asking questions back and forth.
Yeah, I think that's was Jay's original concern, that it wasn't enough detail. So obviously, we want what plants are going to use, what varieties, the heights, the sizes. Some, I think it was Jay mentioned that we need a root barrier along the sidewalk area so that they don't push up the sidewalks, which is happening in front of CVS. And Maria, was there any other details you can add to that to give the applicant?
Changes to the internal parking area, the crosshatched areas to be planted and a continuation of the landscaping and sidewalk along to Holly Street as Jamie mentioned. Information relative to spacing inside the facility as far as customers, employees, particularly with COVID restrictions, how that will be handled. I think that's that's pretty much it for what I have.
Was there any interior landscaping on that? Or is it just like, it was just striping, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that that parking lot's not that deep. I'd have, and I mean, if they if they do the perimeter landscaping late, as they have it laid out and they do the along the the building, I would be happy with that. I mean, interior landscaping on that parking lot between snow removal, it it would be difficult. And I don't know how many spaces we would lose if we try to put in that and have significant, you know, that they'd be significant in size to to make a difference.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about removing any spaces. Where you see those crosshatch areas, those could have a berm around them and be planted or grass to help with infiltration. They do not have to be trees. There's some, anything that they could do to improve both the infiltration and the making those areas obvious. So they're not just lines on the asphalt that people drive over, but it causes them to think and slow down. It's it's a traffic calming measure.
Yeah, I I would agree, which it it needs in there, but it's just in a real-time basis, when you're trying to do snow removal in that type of a parking lot, it it's very difficult with with those interior. I mean, it's not that deep. I mean, you only have four parking spaces, three parking spaces in some of those areas.
Well, it sounds as though the parking, much of the parking will be directed toward the northern section where there's a greater amount of parking. And particularly since we have, I think it was Paul that mentioned pedestrians coming in and out of those businesses. Anything we can do to slow the cars down and make them think a little bit, I think is appropriate for for the safety of the area.
Okay. Well, but if that's the case, then those plantings should be on the on the, should be flipped to the other side.
What do you mean?
They should be in front of the, in front of the buildings, not on the other side of the parking lot.
That's that's a good idea as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Jamie Rabbitt, to to counsel's point, again, there are a number of issues outstanding that I think the commit, the board members have mentioned tonight, specifically landscaping with regards to plant material size, type, location, end caps, Holly Street, landscaping, continuation of the sidewalk, parking and pedestrian vehicular movements, both internal and external to the site. A relook at the employee numbers as well as the Compassion Center's customer numbers as it relates to access to the building. And I think working with the applicant's design engineer, there are some opportunities. And you've just discussed two of them, whether you put landscape islands on the end caps closest to the store or put them closest to Route one oh eight. And, you know, they both serve dual purposes, but they may be more germane to the subject matter of dealing with pedestrian vehicular movements closer to the stores. Typically, you don't, you know, you you landscape islands end caps when you have bays more than twelve spaces. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, these are very tight, narrow bays with four to seven spaces on the southern side. So I think there's an opportunity to work with the design professionals as well as your planning board staff to try and address some of the commission's concerns tonight, including one where you could potentially relocate those two handicap spaces to the north, in essence, in front of the Thai restaurant, if it doesn't affect sightlines of that backing movement to allow, you know, maybe a two-car stack in front of that exit. I did forward a drawing to Mr. Caselli regarding stop bars and centerline stripes. There may have been something lost in translation between the two of us with regards to making those to the final set of plans. But, you know, better defining travel lanes, better defining turning movements, perhaps putting centerline stripes on the aisles to address this. You know, I would equate this to a successful grocery store where there's two main entrances and a lot of movements per hour in and out of a facility. And there are, you know, there are ways to control those movements that may be able to be implemented here. But I think, you know, I have five or six items. We would review the meeting minutes as well as perhaps going back and listening to the tapes and trying to articulate the issues that appear to be a consensus of the commission with the applicant's design team in hopes of them being able to address the issues brought up this evening prior to next month's meeting, if you are intending to continue this. So that the discussion tonight perhaps gives them some a direct track to make those changes, in essence, in an all-inclusive manner. To counsel's point, so that they're they're trying to address the issues the commission has brought up in their entirety.
Okay. And I think one other thing that we probably should ask you, is there going to be any outside refuge dispensers for this facility?
Okay.
Because if so, those will have to be landscaped or fenced in or then I I don't see anything, any detail on that either.
Steve, what was, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If they're going to have a dumpster or any kind of.
Refuge. I thought you said refuge.
My New England accent. Okay. Anything else from board members?
I have one, sorry, I have one comment. I understand the value of having some green space between the parking spots and the building because I think that would be lovely. But I think for me, it's more important to protect the streetscape because there's so much asphalt, especially in that part of town. And CVS did a lovely job of just sort of, sort of putting their little wall up in their trees. And I think that having some sort of green space, maybe even similar to what CVS has going on between the sightlines to that parking lot for me would be important.
So you're saying you'd rather see it on the perimeter?
I want to see it everywhere. So I don't know. But I think it's important to have it along the perimeter because there's so much traffic there. I I would, I want both. So can I have both?
All right. All right. So does the applicant have any question? Yes, go ahead.
Just one other thing with regard to landscape. Is it possible that on the north side of the of the entrance onto Kingstown Road that a couple of trees be added to that since it's all sort of part of the same parcel? There's already existing grass there. There's already existing green space there.
Thank you, Richard. That was on my list too, and I forgot that.
We'll circle back with the with the owner.
Yeah, that would kind of balance off that entrance a little more and screen them. We're not making you do anything in that that parking area, but you would at least screen it from Kingstown Road. Phil. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other point of item that brought up with regards to the waiver on the class one survey. And I think, Mr. Caselli, and you can correct me, Joe, your intent in essence is to do the class one in association with your construction documents and pulling a building permit. And you're permitting with RIDE. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
And you're asking for a waiver of that perimeter survey associated with your site plan development at this point in time? But you would be doing it in the future with construction and building permit?
Yes, that's fair to say.
So Jamie, does that mean it's not technically a waiver, but it's just a delay?
Potentially it's a delay. So you could, you could, you could either waive it at this process with the condition that it's added under construction, or they could potentially withdraw the waiver and or you're denying the waiver and you're requiring it in the future.
If if I may, it's really just a waiver of the necessity of it in this application. And you can make your decision conditional on it being supplied at a later time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we need a motion to continue this to the twenty? Okay.
So moved.
I hear a motion from Maria. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Paul. Any discussion?
Do we, do we have a date to which it's continued?
January twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. I believe that's our next regular scheduled meeting, Jay.
That is correct.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion? Pam, we take a roll, please.
Maria Mack?
I.
Paul Jordan?
I.
Joe Murphy?
I.
Peter Di Stefano?
I.
Steve Demossi?
I.
Susan Axelrod?
I.
Pam Rubenoff, I.
Motion is unanimous and passes. We'll see you on the January twenty sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much for your time.
We have any reports or special items from staff?
You can duck me, and I think Andy's ready to come back.
Well, we're waiting for Andy. Jay, do we have a TRC meeting in January?
At this point, I don't believe we have any applications pending that are ready for a TRC review.
I was gonna say, maybe, Jay, we get something in the next few days.
I'll I'll volunteer if it's a maybe. And it'll be an after, it'll be a one o'clock. I know you guys hate that, but.
The deadline is next, the end of this coming next week.
Okay. And I I may be fully retired by then, so then I could do a morning meeting. But well, when you figure out whether you're going to have one, we'll set the time. Right. That's taken care of. We have Andy yet?
I don't see Andy on the in the list.
He might have just, he just came in to say hi?
You might have thought he was home free after the first one.
Do, for those of us that couldn't make it to the the Zoom meeting for Shab, did you want to have any comments on that?
Is Andy with us or just just me right now?
I think something will be forthcoming from Amy when she's ready. That's all I know.
Ms. Karen, just to report, Shab did make an initial finding, in essence, three. They concluded that they did have jurisdiction.
Jamie, this is on Fieldstone Farms, right?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, on Fieldstone Farms. They concluded that they did have jurisdiction to rule on the matter. They concluded that the planning board did not, in essence, have the right with a rational nexus to require the applicant to install six thousand plus minus feet of sidewalk at this time during this process in the application scope. And their third conclusion was that the affordable units as accessory units were not acceptable to them, that they were of not like-kind quality and primarily scale to the market rate units. So they found that that did not meet the LMI requirement under the state's law. So again, they will render an opinion, and I think Amy would like to go into more detail at some point in time on that matter.
Okay. All right. And our next meeting, we have a special meeting, January fifth, just a reminder for everybody.
Is it the, is it the fifth then, or is it the twelfth and the fourteenth?
It's the seventh, the twelfth.
Wait, I thought we changed it from the seventh.
It was the seventh for a special meeting, twelfth for the work session, and fourteenth for another special meeting.
Because I thought I saw a post mark somewhere. It was June fifth, January fifth, so. But I know, I know we went back and forth, so.
I, I, I. You're making me second guess.
It would, yeah, it would be helpful to know in advance because I know I have something the seventh and.
I believe the discussion that we had in regard to the seventh was, we were sending something, we were sending them to the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission meeting is on the fifth.
Right.
Yes.
So they could get it in a day, they could get it in a day or two before. They could get the Conservation Committee review in a day or two before the planning board meeting on the seventh.
And can you just check all those dates and put them back out for us, Jay? So this.
Will do.
I know when we discussed that the last time, it was getting late. It had been a long night, so.
There's been a few of those, yeah.
Yeah, and with the holiday rush upon us.
So the seventh is the special meeting for which project? Okay. And then the fourteenth is a special meeting for.
Curtis Corner. Village of Curtis Corner.
Do we have four meetings in January? Is that what we're saying?
Yep, looks like it.
Yes, you do. That will be ten meetings in three months.
If you can see, Jay is keeping a running tab.
But but it's not yet ten o'clock, so.
Okay. I'll have you, if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion for.
So moved to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Maria, a second from Joe. There's no discussion for adjournment. All those in favor say aye and happy holidays. Aye.
Aye. Holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
We'll see you guys next year.
Thank you.
Thank you all.